Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation, we will have Chaplain Philip Snodgrass from the Mobile County Sheriff's Office come forward to give the invocation. And please remain standing afterward for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you, Chaplains Snodgrass. We are always grateful that you're willing to come and join us. Thank you. Do we have any speakers signed in this morning?
No, ma'am. No one signed in to speak today.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Hodge, it's your turn.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve application for retail beer, retail table wine, alcohol license submitted by Murphy Oil, USA Inc., for Murphy, USA seventy-eight seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve application for tobacco only. Tobacco license submitted by A and S Smoke Shop, LLC, for one smoke.
So moved.
Second.
For five, authorize hazardous pay for the following. James T. Strickland Youth Center Administration employees, any amount of two hundred dollars per month.
So moved.
Second.
And number six, there is a change in number six. Number six reads as, approve EFP sponsorship agreement with Assistance League Mobile, no total amount of four thousand, to be divided as follows. District one funds any amount of two thousand. District two funds any amount of one thousand. District three funds any amount of one thousand for its fund for palantil being fundraiser.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve a sponsorship agreement with Penelope House, Inc., any amount of one thousand dollars from District three funds for the Mobile Chocolate Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, authorize sponsorship of five hundred dollars with Alabama Coastal Foundation for the two thousand and twenty-three Green Coast Council Sustainability Summit to promote the practice of environmental sustainable principles at their January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three event, to be paid from the Environmental Services Department budgeted funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve requests from Alabama Cooperative Extension Service to waive fees for the John Archer Arena for four H archery students to practice for the two thousand and twenty-three spring competitions on the following dates. There will be no cost or preparation for the county.
So moved.
Second.
Number ten, authorize rejecting all bids and advertise for rebid of detention, lock, inspection, and cleaning. Project scope will be reduced from three years to one year.
So moved.
Second.
Number eleven, approve change order number one with Acre Construction Corporation for a project, Grand Bay Senior Center Walking Trail Subject Tank repairs. If implemented, the change will increase the contract by nine thousand two twenty-nine. New contract total will be two hundred and seventy-four thousand two twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Number twelve, approve sponsorship agreement with Sickle Cell Disease Association of America Mobile County, Inc., any amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars from District one funds for its board of directors' training session.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirteen, amendment to appropriation contract with African Town Community Development Corporation to increase contract amount from thirty-five thousand to eighty-five thousand for a total additional amount of fifty thousand. Additional funds will be used for the senior citizens home rehabilitation program.
So moved.
Second.
Number fourteen, approve professional services agreement with Live Strategies to provide media outreach to the citizens of Mobile County regarding the county's use of American Rescue Plan Act, funding to assist growth and enhance local communities through new construction. Education.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Education opportunities in charitable interest.
I couldn't hear.
Somebody was dragging something out there.
So moved.
Second.
And number fifteen.
I want to ask that we carry this over at least to the next meeting, maybe longer. And if we need to have some dialogue, I can explain my position on it. If not, I'm just going to ask that we carry it over.
You have some questions?
I do. This is, in the history of this position, this is only the second person that the county commission has ever appointed to that position. The first, when this was first created, the federal funds come along. And I think it was Tom who ran it, and he worked for the sheriff's office. And I think that at some point, under the Tillman administration, it was moved to the county commission. And then when Tom retired, I think Dawn was just kind of appointed by the county commission as his replacement. I think she was already working there as the assistant director of the organization. And I guess the main problem that I'm having, or the issue, it's not with Mr. Sullivan. I don't know him. But the problem is that this is a county, it's a non-merit job. It's an appointment, but it's actually a full-time job that the person will be working for the county commission. And I guess the main issue that I have, I've never met the gentleman, and I don't know that either of you have, and I don't know that anybody in our administration's ever talked to the guy. And at the end of the day, although his salary will be reimbursed through the ADCA grant, he's still a county employee. And I have concerns with appointing or hiring someone that no one in the county commission has ever met before.
I think that's a valid concern.
And I have had some conversation with Glenn and Eddie about maybe setting up some kind of protocol for this appointment. And if possibly having Mr. Sullivan come down and introduce himself to the administration, or maybe to the commissioners, before we appoint him to this position.
Well, I like the idea of a protocol, and certainly Mr. Sullivan will be eligible to compete in whatever we set up. Yeah, and I agree with you. It's not about him, because I don't know him either. But it is about a process, and I think that's really important. Thank you for raising it.
Yeah, I just, you know, on the appointments we made, you kind of, I didn't mention anything Thursday, because I wanted to look into it. And once I got to looking into it Friday, it just didn't seem like a good policy to just randomly appoint a person who's going to be drawing a salary from the county. I don't think it merits making the person a merit system employee, because if the grant funding ever ran out, then it would just be an employee we had with no funding source. But I certainly think we need to have some kind of protocol, and I've discussed that with Glenn and Eddie, and they can come to you two guys, or gals, and discuss what I've discussed, and see if that would work for you guys to have this protocol put into place before we make this appointment.
I think it's a very good idea. Oftentimes, we do take recommendations that are given to us, but the appointments don't always necessarily work directly for the county commission. I think in this case, because they do, I think it's prudent that we have an opportunity to meet this individual and talk to them and figure out what that relationship will be like and go forward from there. So let's plan to hold this one over, at least till the next meeting, maybe longer, perhaps, if necessary. It may not be, I don't know. But let's see what we can get set up as far as having Mr. Sullivan come in and meet the commissioner, if you would please.
So is it my understanding, is the commission's wishes that Mr. Sullivan comes in? Or are we opening it up?
Well, I would like to have some more conversation, more conversation with you and Eddie about how we're going to move forward. And then maybe, at that point, I mean, I don't know, are we going to, I would like to sit down and see if we're going to just meet this gentleman and appoint him, or if we're going to open this up for other candidates to maybe apply for this job. I mean, I know it says appointment, but it's really a job that this person, I mean, they get a direct deposit or a paycheck from the county commission every other week or every week. So I don't know how we're going to move forward, however you guys feel are comfortable with moving forward with it.
I'm not opposed to meeting Mr. Sullivan. And if, at that point in time, when we've met Mr. Sullivan, we feel like we need to open it up and have other candidates come in and meet, then we can do, maybe make that decision at that time. But I guess Mr. Sullivan was recommended by the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs and by Ms. Wilhelm as well. So I think because of that, I would certainly like to start with him and meet him. Find out what his qualifications are. I mean, I'm like you, I don't know him, and I certainly don't know what qualifications.
And it's not that I don't trust their recommendation, it's just that I want to make sure that, because at the end of the day, he's not going to be working for ADCA, he'll be working for the Mobile County Commission. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion that we carry this over.
So before we move, I'm not going to, this, because this is not happening often, and it's kind of anomalous, I still think it's important that we have a process and that, whatever that process is, unless there's something about the way ADCA does this that limits us, then I think it's appropriate, like this with any other thing we have, to at least do some kind of advertising. That's what we do. The only people we get to hire without having to go through all of that is our personal assistance. And I think we probably, it would be well for us to be consistent to this extent, unless there's something that we don't know.
I agree. I mean, I think we should have competitive openings or something for this position. To me, it just seems like everybody that works for the county, that's a merit system employee, and I know this isn't a merit job, but they have to go through the personnel board to get a job. And I just, my main concern was that there wasn't any open competitive advertising for the job. And then the second issue that I have is that no one that works for the county commission has ever met a guy that we're about to appoint or hire in a county position.
Well, if what I'm hearing, we are looking for a protocol.
Yes.
That's set up for this position going forward. Mr. Sullivan may be considered, but we want it openly advertised. And is that?
I think we should. I think we, I think we should. And no disrespect to Ms. Wilhelm or to ADCA, and I respect their recommendation. But I think if we're going to be paying, I get it that it's a reimbursable job, but ultimately, they're a county employee, and I think we should be making a decision on who we hire.
But these are pass-through funds, are they not?
Yes, they are.
These are ADCA funds that are coming through the county commission, and they do work for the county, but they are a deck of funds, and I guess that's why they feel like they have a license to be involved in the appointment process.
And I understand that, but when you get ready to hire a deputy, they don't go to Mobile Police Department and do an interview. They go to the sheriff's office and do their interviews. My understanding is he was interviewed by ADCA.
That is correct.
And if we go that, if they want to go that direction, maybe they should, they could make a recommendation of who we hire, if they want to put them on their payroll.
I think we have some time to work this out.
Sure.
Why don't we regroup on this and figure out a way forward that satisfies the desire of the commission to be more involved in the selection process?
Sounds good, Commissioner. We're already started.
Thank you.
I think this is, this is a good conversation, because a month ago, we got a letter saying that they were going to shut down the Mobile office. Then two weeks ago, we get a letter, oh, no, we changed that mind. So this is just a good, a good time for us. You know how some things just kind of rock along, and you just kind of take them for granted? Now that this has surfaced, this is our opportunity to take a real look at it. And we may come back to this same place, but we'll be better informed about what we're doing and what ADCA expects of us and what we can do then.
Sounds good. We'll be working on it.
All right, thank you.
So do we need to make a motion to carry, or I made the motion?
I think you did.
So.
Second. Seconded.
Number sixteen, approve professional services contract with Insight Insights, Inc., to provide a range of consulting services to the Human Resources Department, specific training for the county employees, and other services on an as-needed basis.
So moved.
Second.
Number seventeen, approve appropriation contract with Azalea City Community Development Corporation, any amount of five thousand dollars from District one funds for general operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number eighteen, approve additional funding, any amount of three million eight hundred and eighty-four thousand eighty-one dollars, for the Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvement Phase Two A and Two B pursuant to resolution of the Alabama Trustee Implementation Group for the modification of the project budget for the Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvement Phase Two A and Two B Restoration Project for Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources and Allocation of Interest Funds to provide and enhance recreational opportunities restoration type. The budget modification affects the fund budgeted from TIG. Construction costs increased by three million eight hundred and eighty-four thousand eighty-one dollars, which are necessary to complete the project. On December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, Mobile County Commission Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine, the commission authorized the acceptance of a grant from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvement Project, any amount of four million six hundred and forty-eight thousand three oh four.
So moved.
Again.
Number nineteen, approve renewal support agreement with CDW Government, any amount of four thousand three forty-seven fifty for Adobe Photoshop CC for Teams and Adobe and Design CC for Teams for the revenue commission.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty, approve renewal of equipment watch-like package subscription online services, any amount of three thousand eight fifty-eight forty for the period January eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three through January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four for the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-one, approve contract amendment with Eagle Electrical Services for the additional amount of ten thousand dollars for a revised total not to exceed thirty-four thousand six oh four to add required longshoreman insurance for additional lighting and outlets at Cedar Point Pier.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-two has a correction, and it reads, approve EFP sponsorship. Oh, you meant, that's the wrong one. I'm sorry. Approve lease agreement with Vic Real Estate LLC landlord and Mobile County Commission Southwest Regional Highway Safety Office for offices spaced located at eleven nineteen Government Street, Mobile, for one year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, at a monthly rate of two thousand one hundred, and reimbursed monthly to the county by the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs pending legal review.
So the revision is one year?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-three, authorize the sending, the county engineer's approval, of an extension of the approval for the preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval, Penny Lake's First Edition subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, approve preliminary and final plat of Peterson subdivision, re-subdivision of Lot Three.
So moved.
Second.
And number twenty-five would be read by the deputy county engineer, Kim Sanderson.
Hey, I'm going to read the report that is signed by Brian and is to be submitted.
Is your mic on?
There you go. Is that better?
Uh huh.
Okay. I'm going to read the report that is going to be signed by Brian and submitted to y'all later this week. As required by Act two thousand and nineteen dash two, Section eleven E, known as the Rebuild Alabama Act.
Hold on just a minute, if you would, Kim. We seem to have a lot of activity out in the atrium during our meetings. Yeah, or either outside. Hang on just a minute. Maybe we can get them to pause briefly. Go ahead, please.
Known as the Rebuild Alabama Act, we are submitting this report of activities involving projects that were designated to receive funding in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, adopted by the county commission in August of two thousand and twenty-one. No amendments have been made to this plan. Also included in this report are the activities of projects still active in prior plans. Mobile County received four million five hundred and four thousand three dollars and forty-six cents in revenue from Rebuild Alabama for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Total expenditures were three million four hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents, which included expenditures on nine projects. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, there were six projects listed on the two thousand and twenty-two county transportation plan. Two of these projects had expenditures in two thousand and twenty-two. They were Sweet Town Road and Sweet Town Road North, and road construction materials that were used by the county's public works crews for resurfacing in a total amount of seven hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents. The Sweet Town Road, Sweet Town Road North project provided supplemental funding to one of the two thousand and twenty Mobile County Transportation Pay as You Go Program projects. The four remaining projects included on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two plan are still in the preliminary phase, but are expected to go to construction in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. They are Creola Axis Loop Road East, Calioka Road, Sand Ridge Road, the next part, and Hog Road. There were no new projects listed for the Federal Aid Exchange funding. However, current funding is being spent on the Dodge Road project from approximately Scott Dairy Loop to Cottage Hill Road. This is an active construction project and had a total of eight hundred thousand dollars of Rebuild Alabama funding spent in two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-two, there were expenditures for two projects from the two thousand and twenty plan. They were Solley Road and Sam Lewis Road for a total amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty-nine cents, and both of these projects are complete. There were expenditures on four projects in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two included on the two thousand and twenty-one plan. They were Sand Ridge Road, Sunset Road Bridge Replacement, Creola Axis Loop Road North, and road construction materials. The total expenditures for these projects in two thousand and twenty-two were one million eight hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents. One remaining project from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one plan is still in the preliminary phase, but is expected to go to construction during fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. And that's it. Okay. Thank you very much.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-six, approve agreement for relocation of utility facilities in conflict with proposed roadway improvements with South Alabama Utilities for Project McDavid Road, grade, drain, base, and pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-seven, approve supplemental agreement number one with John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., project, Richard Streets, resurfacing for additional pay items for great reset and temporary striping to increase the contract by fourteen thousand eight forty-one seventy-three.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-eight, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segment of roads, and subdivision streets.
I just want to say Brad, and Brian, and Kim as well, thank you guys for all that you do. I know you go out every day, and people don't see some of the things behind the scene, but particularly the roads in my district that we're reducing the speed limits on, I think is going to help save lives and property in the future. So I appreciate everything that you guys do on these little tasks like this. With that said, so moved.
Second.
And number twenty-nine was voted at the conference. Number thirty, commission announcements and/or comments.
Let's look at it. So for the last, I guess, I don't know, it may be three years I've been involved with the National Association of Counties, NACOS, Economic Mobility Leadership Network, and we have gone all over the country looking at how various counties, diverse counties is diverse, from Mercer County, West Virginia, to Monoma County, and Henepin, Monoma County, Oregon, which is Portland, and Minneapolis, and look in Minnesota. And what we've been doing is looking at how different communities, what different communities are doing to try to promote economic mobility in their communities within the confines of what counties can do. And so this week, we will be hosting them here in Mobile. It's about twenty-five from all over the country. And this will be, we have one more convening after this one, but this is their first trip to the deep south. We went to Palm Beach County, but anywhere with a median house price is six hundred and seventy thousand dollars is not the deep south. So they're going to, this will be their first flavor of what it's like to be in the south. Some of them have never been this far south. So Dana has been helping to staff this, but we're doing this. So we're really, and the issues that we're looking at here is what Mobile County does in partnership with K-12 Community College to promote workforce development, how we work with industry, because we can't really do economic mobility work, but we can work with the entities that do that, and how we, how those partnerships are playing out and hopefully making a difference in the lives of people here in Mobile County. So that'll be going on, it's Wednesday, it starts tomorrow night. They're using the Renaissance, and it'll be tomorrow, Saturday, and. They're using the Renaissance, it'll be tomorrow, Saturday, and, I mean, I'm sorry, tomorrow, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we finish midday Thursday morning, and I just want to thank each of you who've done anything or contributed in any way in making all of this come together. I appreciate it, just want you to know it.
So it's the representatives from, on the Economic Mobility Council for this NACO Committee?
Yeah, economic, it's called Economic Mobility Co-Hort. Bill, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation funded this for NACO, and then they did a call for anybody who was interested in this, and they picked twenty-five communities, and so they're just going to look at what we do here, and we're going to tell the truth about our limitations as a county in Alabama, but also I think we've done some great work in spite of that, and that's what we'll be highlighting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for sharing.
As many of you may know, January ninth is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and, you know, law enforcement all over the country, but particularly, I want to talk about the law enforcement in our community, our deputies, our many municipalities, our state and federal officers here in Mobile County. If you get an opportunity today to, to tell them how much you appreciate what they do, they, they take jobs that put their life at, at risk every day. It's a thankless job that takes many of them away from their families for countless hours, and I for one appreciate law enforcement, and I just wanted to remind everybody that today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and if you get an opportunity to thank a police officer, try to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. I feel like we should pass a resolution if, if we need to do that to make it, to signify that, acknowledge that here in Mobile County. Why don't we do that?
Maybe we should, we could do that. We could get someone to draft a resolution as, maybe do that, and maybe one of the next upcoming meetings, and just recognize that in Mobile County.
The role of law enforcement in Mobile County and what it is.
Nationwide.
How important it is in serving our citizens and maintaining public safety, and they do a great job. I know a lot of times all we hear is bad news, and, and, and it's unfortunate, but there are so many people out there in law enforcement working so very hard, and as you said, sacrificing their time with family and putting their lives on the line to keep our community safe, and we're, we're very fortunate, and you're right, we, we need to make sure that we're, we're thanking these people every opportunity that we get and calling attention to what they do. So I think whatever we can do to acknowledge that, we certainly should.
And I think everybody in Mobile County agrees that none of us want to live in a world where there's no law.
Amen.
I think we could all agree on that.
And I mean, and really, if you look across the nation at some of the, there are issues with some law enforcement, and I don't want to get off, get off on that, but you know, we're really fortunate here. I worked in the law enforcement community for twenty-five years, and we have some really good police officers, and, and really, I've worked with just about every municipality and, and state and federal agencies in Mobile County, and we, we're fortunate to have a great group of law enforcement professionals in our community.
Well said.
All right. Thank you.
That does it.
Number thirty-one approve request for, or motion to adjourn until January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Everyone have a great day.